I have six o'clock. Or six thirty, excuse me. Sorry. Yeah, let's do it right. First thing we have is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the board on March nine and the special meeting of the board on March ten.
So moved. Don't you make some changes to the minutes of March ten?
Yeah, there was on the, I think the second to last one, it had read, so when we're at motion by McAvoy, supported by Spalding to amend the agenda to address section two, paragraph two, superintendent's contract, dealing with contract extension. That had read zero and three.
It was the next one.
Or was it the next one? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it said motion by Spalding, supported by Shugst, to consider motion that the superintendent contract shall not be renewed additionally here, and that had been zero and three, and we changed it to seven, to zero.
And it was passed?
It was passed.
Okay.
It's still incorrect, Michelle. It says motion defeated.
Oh, because it was from the, okay. See, I smiled or changed the number and didn't even pay attention to that.
So it reads, it reads seven, zero, and now passed.
Motion carried.
Alright, so we, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on, like, the board on March nine, as well as a special meeting of the board on March ten, as amended.
I'll make that motion? Or did he have a question?
I have a, I just noticed mine says the special board meeting on March four. Is that a different special meeting?
Okay, let me tell you guys what the problem is. I hadn't finished the minutes, and I was gone over the weekend. Ben grabbed the minutes that I had started. He didn't know that I didn't finish and sent them off to you guys. That's why there was, that's why they're all goofy.
Oh, never mind. This, this was the minutes from last meeting that we were approving for a March fourth meeting.
Okay. So does it, does it read March ten?
There's a March ten and a March nine.
Right. March ten is the one.
March nine.
Right. And, and so the motion will have to be to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the board on March nine, as well as the special meeting of the board on March ten, as amended. And then Tracy, you just need to keep a copy of the amendments on there at this point. If we approve it this way, we have to show the original and the amendment.
Okay, so one line through is?
Yeah. As long as we agree with seven, zero, and it was passed.
Approved.
So Tracy, you made a motion for that?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's carried. Guests, public comment. We have lots of guests tonight. Nice to see. Any public comment? Alright, we'll move on. Principles, staff, student reports, presentations to the board. Has anyone seen Ben Hacks? Is he still doing okay? We'll put him out of the agenda again.
Is he probably a baseball star?
It prob- probably. They were still doing softball. Alright, Rachel Peer, honorable mention at the NMC Art Show for her portrait of Chris Corbin.
Do you want to hold it up?
Yeah, could you do it? Tell us all.
Maybe pass it around?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to see it.
The actual painting is still at NMC, right? So she brought a photograph of it.
Rachel, how, do you know how many people submitted different items, or?
I don't know that Mrs. Cosby.
Yeah, many people submitted artwork, but they only selected, I think around forty, to actually be in the show. And so both of her works were selected, and then she also earned honorable mention for this piece, which is pretty awesome, especially considering it was a lot of Traverse City schools that may have larger art programs. And they had like ceramics, and they had all sorts of categories too. So she won with her painting, which I think is awesome, to see the more traditional forms of artwork being, you know, winning awards as well. So she did a great job.
There's no doubt about who that is.
Rachel, what are your plans after high school?
Um, I'm gonna go to college for either two or four years, and then I want to become a tattoo artist.
A what?
A tattoo artist.
You don't care if I put it all over Facebook, do you?
Oh, I don't mind. It's already up there.
Full credit. Okay, good. You got, you got a smile. He's got.
Are we ready for this?
I think so. Right ahead.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, so as some of you know, however, I'm not sure that everybody does, we'll be holding a Pina Palooza. Rachel actually coined the term for that. So it will be a fundraiser to raise money for our art program, so that we can order more art supplies or like blazes for ceramic, some of the more expensive art items that we don't already have, that we would like to experiment with in art class. So this will be, well, what it is, is I know some of you have probably heard of Painting with a Twist. They have one in Traverse City. We'll be having something kind of similar here. So each guest that comes will receive his or own, his or her very own stretch canvas. Okay, the use of acrylic paints and paintbrushes. We will have everything set up for you there. And then step-by-step painting instructions from two of Central Lake Spina students. So we have Brooklyn and Rachel back here. We may have other students volunteer as well. And relaxing time to spend with fellow community members. So ideally, we'd like people to come, sit down. I might have a slushy machine. I'm working on that. Enjoy some time with one another and paint for fun. Even if you're terrible at it, it's always great to try it out. And it is step-by-step instruction, so even if, you know, you haven't painted in twenty years or more, and last thing you painted was a stick figure, it's still good to have that experience, and you'll do great. These girls are great instructors, so they'll make sure that your paintings will look wonderful on your walls. And if not, you can always give them to your mom or your grandma or your mother's day. They always love your work.
They will appreciate it.
So it will be Friday, April 24th, six to eight p.m. here in the high school cafeteria. We're asking twenty dollars per person, because all the proceeds will benefit the art program at Central Lake Public Schools, and we will have to buy the canvases and whatnot ahead of time. So that is part of the cost that people are paying for. And we did a couple trial runs with my art classes. This was from my six-hour art class, and these are mostly freshmen and sophomores. Okay, so some of them have a lot of art experience, some very little, besides art class. So, and there's Rachel and Brooklyn up there on the right.
Who's hiding in the back, ducking down, trying not to be read?
Kaylin Varellan. I told them, I go, August and Selena. Yep. I told them, I'm like, make sure your paintings, uh, they didn't want their faces.
The Selena vector?
Teenagers, you know, yeah.
Just making sure, alright.
Yep. And this is from our fifth-hour art class. We took this one today. So we did two different images to try and test it out. We'd like to give the guests a choice of what image they'd like to paint. So we're thinking we'll have Rachel paint an image, and then Brooklyn paints a separate image, and I'll be there also to kind of help with everything. And then everyone can choose what image they'd like to paint and follow the corresponding instructor. And then we also have some samples over here for you on the walls. That is off for the slideshow, so. And Rachel just painted the Calidoli today. And then Brooklyn started this other painting here today, so it's not finished.
Well, okay, pass that out, or no?
And so she covered this up, because she's like, it's not done yet. I don't want anyone to see that part yet. But it's a, you know, work in progress, so we're coming up with more ideas. So we're not sure exactly what two images we'll be painting at Pina Palooza, but we'd like to see you all there.
How long does it take? I mean, obviously, you did that in an hour. But how long does it take to do?
Um, the flower that I just did it today took hour and a half.
Hour and a half?
Somewhere around there.
Wow. It's much better than what I can do. Yep, thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
The twentieth?
The twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yep, the twenty-four.
Twenty-four from six to eight.
Yes, and anybody in the community or elsewhere is welcome.
Are you, do you have like tickets that people are gonna buy? I mean, how are you, they're just come and pay at the door?
Yeah, well, I'll have them pay at the door. And then if you do plan on coming, you wouldn't mind sending me an email? That'd be great, just to pre-register. That way I know how many canvases to buy for the event. And we should have enough paint and paintbrushes and whatnot, so I'll make sure that we have all the supplies ready. If you kind, kind of give me a heads up, that'd be great. Alright, are there any other questions on that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. Principles update.
Um, the M step testing began today with the juniors and the fifth graders. It's taken a bit longer with, than we thought with some areas. This is a new format for both our staff and our students, but it's underway, and we get it done, and we'll keep going the rest of the time. We have no choice. On the Thursday before break, the twenty-sixth, I attended, and several of our students, I think there were nine of them there, went down to Lions Club for a dinner and a presentation. The Lions presented our students with a plaque, which I'll pass around to the board. They have the first Leo Club, which is an extension of the Lions Club here at school, and all the kids' names are on it. And they're very excited about some of the community service projects that they're gonna be starting here in Central Lake and working with the Lions Club. So we were excited for another new opportunity to work with the Lions Club. Kim Fernandez and Liz Hughes took two groups of students to participate in Quiz Bowl last Friday, and all of our students that were there participated. One of our teams came in fifth of nineteen, and our school was selected for next year to participate in Quiz Central, which is held at CMU next fall. So they're pretty excited about that. Donors Choose has chosen Kim Fernandez again to receive extra funding for her classroom project called Learning Languages Through Literature, and she's going to receive thirty copies of the book. Kim, can you tell me the name of the book?
The Petite France.
And so she'll get thirty copies of the book and one audio version of the book as well. So we're excited about that. The Red Cross Blood Drive was held beginning of March on the ninth. They collected forty-one pints, and then they had to defer nine people who were unable to give for various reasons, so that was a good turnout. PTO Family Movie Night was a success. We had a hundred and thirty people there and attendance. The elementary gym was full, and it was a fun night with popcorn and movies and kids. The second, third grade both attended plays this last month in Traverse City. The Theater Workshop was held this past weekend, and we want to thank Jessica Green in the Heart for organizing that and working with our students. This coming Friday, 4H group is gonna meet in our cafeteria for their spring achievement event from four to eight. They're gonna be open to the public about four-thirty. They're gonna show project evaluations, interviews, see displays, and show some hands-on activities. At six o'clock, they're gonna have a potluck dinner in there. On April twenty-second, we're excited, Kenny Behrens is gonna present to the students at two o'clock his trip to Japan, and then at six o'clock, he will also present the community for anybody that would like to come, and that anybody would like to attend the two o'clock performance as well. There's gonna be a performance, there'll be a fellow talk presentation. He's gonna show his art. He's very excited to show.
Where is that gonna be?
In our gymnasium. Yep. Yep, so he's very excited. And then he also put on here that this is Pina Palooza's, on the twenty-fourth. So, yeah, lots of good things coming up and happening. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no committee reports. Review the expenditure logs, approval of bills. Do I have a chance to look at those? Any questions? We need a motion. People will be march votes. So moved. That'd be great. Support. We have a motion and support to approve the march bills. Is there any discussion?
That was supported by Jerry McAvoy.
Jerry McAvoy. Yep. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. That's carried. The first action item is to consider a motion to approve Dr. Washburn's written summary of the Board of Education's annual evaluation of Superintendent Williams. That was sent to each of you. I think I had a response that it looked accurate. So at this point, the, the draft copies, I handed some folks draft copies of those. We're making that official with this motion. So we need a motion to approve his, Dr. Washburn's written summary of the Board of Education's annual evaluation of Superintendent Williams. So moved. Do we have support?
I'll support it.
That was Tracy. Any discussion? Though, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. That would be six oh. Consider motion, oh, before we move on.
Resolution.
Pardon me?
Resolution.
We, yeah, we have a, the resolution, but before we move on to that, I, I said that I would bring some material for the evaluation.
Future evaluation.
Uh, not teacher evaluation, but.
No, I said future.
Pardon me?
Future evaluation.
Future evaluations, yes. This is a two-page document that came from MASB. This is the entire download from MASB that I, I talked to Donna Oser. And this is a document that we can use for artifacts as evidence, and it's just two pages. It's also in here. And, and I think, based on what we heard in that evaluation meeting, that, that I would suggest that I give this to Jerry McAvoy to take a look at, there are folks at the MASB that, that will work as consultants to lead us through that process as we go forward with that. So.
Are we still also considering the information we got from Harbor Springs?
Yes. And, and what is, what is in there is the original before Harbor Springs.
Okay.
There's a, there's a ton of material. As a matter of fact, I tried, I think it successfully went to Keith. I, I have that entire download that I, if you're interested, I'll email it to you. But we need to move on that and get that going.
You know, just as a, are you finished?
I'm, yeah.
Interrupt you. I'm good at that, but I'm trying to improve. I, I don't have a problem with the past evaluations that, that the boards have used. I just think there should be something that we can measure. Objective's part of that. If, if we're interested in keeping that same one, but there's gotta be something that we can measure, something that is measurable.
Right. I, I agree. I agree. Whichever way we go. And I, and the Donna Oser that I talked to had, had lots of suggestions, and this was part of it. But I think you take, just take a look at it, and then we'll go from there. Alright. Moving on. Consider resolution to support proposal one. The statewide ballot proposal on Michigan roads and bridges and many other things. But the way our motion would read would be, consider a resolution to support proposal one, the statewide ballot proposal on Michigan roads and bridges, that voters will be asked to approve on May fifth election. Before we, we ask for, for a motion and support on that, I really would like that to take a few minutes and just talk about that.
Thank you. What I copied for you, and I actually bought it, would be interesting information for everyone in the audience to have too, so I copied for you as well. I think everybody should have two pieces of paper. One is two-sided, and on one side has the actual ballot language. On the other side is a little template, little visual, and a fact sheet. And then the other one really is four questions about proposal one. MASB, Michigan Association School Boards, and MASAA, Michigan Association School Administrators, statewide is getting behind proposal one for a couple of key reasons. Number one, the roads are abysmal. If you've driven anywhere other than down eighty-eight between here and Bel Air, which is recently repaved and is actually quite nice, we do have a lot of roads that are crumbling and really in need of serious repair, as well as our bridges. Number two, currently, and this is one thing the legislators are really making a key point on, is if it doesn't pass, there is no Plan B. And so they, they're very consistent about saying, if it doesn't pass, two things happen. Number one, there's no Plan B. Number two, the schools K-12 do not get the infusion of three-hundred-plus million dollars that this tax is supposed to earmark for schools. And more importantly, the constitutional loophole is not closed to prohibit the rating of the school aid fund. We in public education have been at the hands of quite a few opportunities over the last many years, where other entities have been able to, with legislative approval, dip into the school aid fund to bail out other budget shortfalls at the state level. So proposal one, the way the ballot is written and the way the language probably best summarizes it is on this sheet at the very bottom, last bold print on the bottom left, where it says, constitutionally assures the school aid fund is used only for K-12 schools, community colleges, and career technical education. In the past, the school aid fund's been used for purposes other than what it was intended, which is K-12 public education. And proposal one would prohibit the use of school aid funds for any reason other than K-12 schools, community colleges, and career tech. Currently, the school aid fund is available if the state needs to bail out a four-year school. This would shut the door on that, as well as other things. I'm not gonna go into detail to read about the earned income tax credit, but I did think that the actual ballot language on the back would be an interesting thing for everybody to be able to preview and think about before the election on May fifth. And give some careful consideration to the bill from the standpoint of doing the things that constitutionally is proclaiming to do, as well as take care of a fund source for road and bridge maintenance from now on. One worry is with the elimination of one of these taxes, and then the increase from six to seven percent, the amount of dollars coming into the school aid fund could evaporate if this isn't passed. So give it a careful look.
It can be even faster than what they pick it now. Not that I'm a cynic.
I, yeah. I'll shrug on that. So, for what it's worth, this, I think this two-pager with the actual ballot language, you know, is, is helpful. It's good information. You know, it gives you things to think about, as do the four questions. What's proposal one? What happens if voters approve it? Why does it involve schools? What happens to the roads if proposal one fails? It would have probably been cleaner and neater to have a roads bill separately, and then infuse money into the school aid fund. Oftentimes, though, in politics, deals are made, and alliances are forged, and a simple bill grows into a very large bill with lots of appendages. So, and I think there, there are some constitutional protections in here that are good for public schools. Shutting the door on rating the school aid fund is pretty important, because it has been rated almost every year. So, things to think about.
They can take from K-12 and give to the community and technical, all right?
Correct.
So they could still give it all to them and nothing to K-12?
Correct. Yep. That, that door is still open. It just proposes to shut the door on other uses, most notably the four-year schools.
Is there, um, there's a guarantee that we'll still get at least as much as we're getting now, and it should go up? There's not?
If, if we were in formula.
Okay.
I, I don't believe this will affect us.
This will not affect us?
I, I don't believe that. It, it could only affect us, A, most, it would most directly affect us if we were in formula.
Correct.
But it can affect us, depending on how some of the other bills and some of the other state budgeting goes, in categorical funding. And so there may be some increases in other fund sources that do benefit us, but as an out-of-formula district, you know, directly per pupil funding, if it increases per pupil funding.
Then we could, we could fall back into.
And, and then again, you could be, yeah, in-formula, out-of-formula, kind of dancing that line. So.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not an easy equation to try to put, bend the paper on and, and figure out. Now, you know, I know I had some conversations prior to the meeting about, well, what was the lottery supposed to do? That's unrelated to this, but, you know, the lottery was supposed to supplement. The lottery funds that have come in have supplanted, which means the school aid fund has been reduced and held harmless by inserting the lottery, but that wasn't, I don't think, the original intent. I, I don't believe, I, I don't remember exactly what that, how that ballot was worded. But at any rate, that is the background. I wanted to make sure I, I not only gave the board these handouts to review, but everybody else could kind of look at them as well, as the board considers the resolution.
Just to make sure my ignorance as a, as a voter, but is currently the, the constitution of the state, currently states the sales tax is six percent. It's done through the constitution.
I believe so.
I mean, at ninety-four, that's, when it went from four to six percent, ninety-four, they had a vote on that.
For the constitution to change. Okay.
Yeah, that's an interesting morphoid on the bottom right of that two-sided sheet. It was showing the comparison of tax rates to the other states.
Other discussions? Yeah. Alright. Consider a resolution to support proposal one, that statewide ballot proposal on Michigan roads and bridges that voters will be asked to approve on May fifth. Do we have a motion? Greg? Do we have support? That's telling.
Well, I'll support it for discussion.
Alright, we have a motion and support for the proposal. Support of the proposal. Discussion?
One question that I, I would have is what, I guess, what exactly are you asking us as the board to do through this resolution to?
There was, from the, I believe, MASB, there was a request. They would like to see one hundred percent of the school boards in the state of Michigan support the ballot proposal. That's their recommendation.
And by doing so, we're just making a statement publicly?
We are making a statement publicly that we're, we're supporting it. And, and I will go so far as to say, I, I am very apprehensive. I guess I'm a cynical. I wish that they had just a clean bill to take care of the roads. You know, I, I took a trip to Yellowstone this fall, and the worst roads that I drove on were from Mackinac City through Potaski, Chalaboy, and our area. It was horrible.
That's just because you're not very skilled.
Avoiding all the. Yeah. I, I mean, everywhere else, everywhere else, the roads were better. So there's no question. So, there's no question that they need to do that, but.
But is it?
My problem is, is that I haven't, it's hard for me to say or support something I haven't had the opportunity to read in full. I haven't been able to get all the way through it, and, and therefore, it's just tough for me to say, "Yeah, sure, I'll support something I don't fully under, or haven't fully understood or read."
And for those of us that are a little older, the cynicism of, of.
Proposal A.
Every, every proposal we've had has been raided.
Sales tax, period.
What was that, Jerry? So, I, I really get caught up in wishing that this were just a clean proposal. I mean, I, I shudder to think that if, if it goes down, and, and there's a knee-jerk reaction by our legislature to raid the school aid fund in some fashion, even though we're out of formula, it's still bad. And, and that could very well happen in the political climate that we have.
And we can only hope that there's enough others down there that are well hired enough that there wouldn't let that happen.
But, so.
Do we, do you know any other districts in our area that are putting this on their agendas or?
Most of the, most of the other, the Charlemagne either put it on last month or have it on this month.
Right.
Whether or not they've all passed, I don't know, but, but I can tell just, just from discussions with my peers, that everyone is at least considering a resolution and having the discussion and thinking about, and, you know, it, it's a good coffee shop dialogue with folks in the community about, you know, everything's got pros and cons to it. You could say there's some cons in here. There's some pros in here. So, it's a healthy discussion.
So, if it goes down, what, because I know Ben, your legislative knowledge is pretty good, what do you see happening? I mean, if it, if it doesn't happen, what do you see?
Well, there are, there's at least one legislator on record who will say, or who already has said, "If it goes down, we will be coming after the school aid fund to take care of propping up some budget shortfalls in some other areas. A notable four-year K-12 would be one of those." I, you know, one person's statement doesn't mean, you know, a vote carries, but one person is on record saying that would be the intent or his intent, so.
So, they're almost coming at it as a, do this, or we're going to take funding from your schools. It's not, let's fix the roads in a positive manner. It's a, do this, or we're going to hurt your kids.
Educators.
Well, if only one, one person's saying that, that's hard to.
Educators have a lot of, a lot of positive influence in each of their communities. Educators, school boards, board members, teachers, staff, PTO groups, parents, those are large groups in every community. And, and I think, you know, I think it's interesting to see, if you look back 45 days, the polling numbers on this were 2/3 against, 1/3 for. The margin has narrowed greatly. It's now 55 against, 45% for, so it's, it's tightening as the date approaches, which a couple of pollsters have said mirrors very closely some of the other notable proposals. They started out with a wide negative margin, and as they got closer to the vote date, it narrowed and they actually ended up passing. So, you know, I, I don't think, you know, a tax increase isn't an easy pass.
It's never an easy pass.
But if you look at, if you look at the need, I mean, there's no doubt the need is there with roads and bridges.
Sure.
So, that, I, I think, one penny, I'll pay a penny. At the gas pump, I'll pay a penny to fix, you know, to fix the roads, fix the bridges. I mean, I don't think anybody wouldn't do that. It's, I think it's, it's the total package that everyone has to just reflect on.
But, it's not just a penny, because it'll increase the gas fuel tax.
Oh, yeah.
Plus registration fees for our vehicles.
There'll be some other costs.
I read somewhere online that right now, Michigan is the sixth highest in gas fuel taxes, and if this passes, we go to first. Wow.
Well, at least we're first in something.
All right, all right. I didn't want to shout it out.
No, the only, the only thought was, M A S B is a very large following, and I'm sure there are very other large organizations out there that are behind proposal one, and they're following suit with, with others, so they can, being as it may, there's good, there's bad. That's, that's, that's Washington, that's Lansing. My thought would be on it, if there's this many organizations go for, for the greater good of our state and the community, I would be in support of, of passing this, just because I think, we can look at it, I, I feel a little bit more comfortable knowing we're out of formula. So, I guess I'm a little more breathing a, a better side there, but, you know, for the greater good of our state, if, if we don't pass this, nothing, and nothing's been done about roads, it's been talked about for years and years and years. So, if there's no action taking place, guess what? More talk is going to happen for years and years and years. This is the strongest legislative power to get us even to this point. So, my concern is, if it doesn't pass, then we're back with our hands in the air once again.
Jerry, you make a good point about there's some other related fees that would probably be climbing as well. This just kind of caught my attention. On the one-sided sheet, on the bottom right, that fourth question, what happens to the roads if it fails? This is an interesting, your car might have fallen off. Michigan ranks 50th in per capita spending for roads and bridges. I would believe that, having driven most of the rest of the U.S. I would believe that. And I also agree, Greg, on like what you just said, if it doesn't pass, it won't be 30 or 60 or 90 days behind it that they have another opportunity or another bill or another solid piece of legislation to get something going. It's going to be a lengthy discussion, and, and we will all, whether it's, whether it's our school buses, whether it's our personal vehicles with bent tire rod ends, with busted rims and tires, with other issues that are related to the roads, God forbid, rags and or fatalities with road issues. Yeah, that's a pretty compelling piece of information.
Anyone else? All right, we are considering a resolution to support proposal one, statewide ballot proposal for Michigan roads and bridges that voters will be asked to approve on May 5th, on the May 5th election. You have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same? No? All right.
Me too. It's a nay.
A nay?
Nay.
Wait, okay.
Let's go through it.
I guess you.
Yep, we need to poll it.
Okay. You want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm an aye.
I.
I'm an aye.
Aye as well.
Nay.
Nay and aye. It's passed 4-2.
Starting off with curriculum instructional administrative updates. First of all, welcome back from spring break. It finally looks like spring out there. If you were out of town on spring break in Florida, good for you. If you were around here, it snowed, not once but twice, and, and then it was nice, there was a nice day, so, you know, we, we got a hint of this, and of course, this last weekend was fantastic. Quick enrollment update, we have 290 students currently, down two from our last count. We've had a kindergarten move out of state to Ohio, and a first grader move to Charlestown. Both of these moves are family and/or job-related. We currently have 44 three- and four-year-olds in the combined CL Early Childhood Program. That's the three classrooms at Stark GSRP and the Central Lake Preschool. This is down two from 46 a few months ago. The current number of 44 is down from the high of 50, which is where we were pretty much since the start of the year. We held steady for about four months there at 50. All three early childhood rooms are currently operating under capacity. There is room available. We do have, and I talked to Tiffany Truskin today, Elementary Secretary, as well as Shelley, there is a new kindergarten enrolling this week, but I don't believe is in the books yet, or is, has been, I don't believe all paperwork's in, so. And we believe there's a new preschooler coming too, but I'll keep you updated. Two more required, school safety drills. With spring weather here, we will be completing our last two required annual safety drills. Both these drills are fire drills. They're both scheduled for the month of April, so we will be taking care of those, and that will take care of the 10 that are required on the school year. And knock on wood, with the exception of a cancellation for a, a test, which was the M-Step, we have not had to cancel one of these pre-scheduled drills. And if you recall, this is the first year that all districts have had to pre-schedule and pre-publish with their county emergency manager each of their drills, and you just have to hope that the weather's not a major problem. So, so far, we've, we've hit it pretty well, and we'll hope, hope to finish strong. Career Tech Ed banquet scheduled for April the 28th. This is the annual Career and Technical Education banquet. That will be at Boyne Mountain Conference Center. This annual banquet allows all ISD member school districts and their career tech ed teachers the opportunity to recognize the best and the brightest students from their respective career and tech ed programs. That's always a great event and well attended by students and parents, and Shelley and I have gone, I think, every year, I believe, and all the more reason to go this year, since I believe someone you might know might be one of those career tech ed teachers. First negotiations meeting has been scheduled. I was contacted by Mary Lieberman, who's worked here with some of the staff here at the school. We have a date of April the 29th set up for our initial meeting. We typically schedule about five or six meetings throughout the summer, where we'll sit down and handle negotiating the new teacher contract. This first meeting, we're really just going to get the calendars out and schedule dates, so we expect only about 30 minutes at the first meeting, and then I'll keep the board apprised of when the future meetings are. Work continues in preparation for the first School and Community Visioning Planning Improvement Committee meeting. Shelley and I have had a couple of different conversations with Gus Bishop. We've also had a conference call with Liz Hughes and Gus. Liz is going to be helping us gather and kind of package and put form and shape to all of the related trend data that we're pulling together. We have a robust list of almost 50 individuals from the community that we've identified. We're preparing letters of invitation with R S V Ps to go out for the first, first meeting, which will be Thursday, May the 14th, at Torch Lake Township Hall. We're looking at about two, two hour and 15 minute, maybe two hour and a half for the first meeting, and following that, it will be a, a smaller group, kind of a steering committee of that larger committee that will meet and take note at initial recommendations and kind of put some more shape to some of our improvement planning and improvement discussions, whether they be community-school related, or whether they be more strictly school-related, dealing with curriculum instruction. We know that in October, we have a school improvement accreditation site visit coming, and this is one of the great first steps, not only to do with school and community relations and building and visioning, but to do in preparation for that, for that site visit, so.
Give it time on that, Ben.
Yeah, 5:30, sorry, 5:30, and probably wrapping up around 8:00. We will have light refreshments there, and Gus will be, will be scheduling a follow-up conference call with Gus to kind of walk through some of the protocols with our five-table leaders, when we, you know, split the group up into five groups, and I have some gorgeous work. Moving on to finance personnel updates, the Michigan State Police Safety Grant, we were notified that Central Lake was successfully securing a nice piece of money through the MSP School Safety Grant in the amount of $31,198. It was interesting, before we even were notified, we'd received the grant, I had phone, multiple phone calls coming in from vendors wishing to do various bits of work. They knew we got the grant before we knew we got the grant. They were monitoring the website hourly to watch the grant awardees. I'm in the process right now of itemizing the grant list. My initial grant request was a little over $51,000. We received $31,198, which is a nice piece, but it's not enough to do the complete package. So, what I'm doing now is itemizing the grant list, and will request some clarification from the auditor as to whether it's allowable to use sinking fund dollars for each of these pieces of the grant for the initial payment. The way the grant is structured is it's a repayment or reimbursement grant. So, we spend the money, we install the upgrades, and then we are reimbursed up to the $31,198. If the purchases are sinking fund allowable, the second question of the auditor will then be, can utilize allowable sinking fund expenses and then reimburse your own sinking fund? I'm not sure you can, but I'll find that out. If you can't, then we will be making sure we look at these purchases out of the 15, 16 budget, which would be July 1. Spring budgeting, speaking, kind of to continue on that theme, I'm in the process of finalizing the spring budget update information from Antrim County. Michelle and I were on the phone again with treasurer and equalization today. That's Sherry Coman. We will be determining once she has the data in, and she's not yet finished, what, if any, spring shortfall might exist. Are there any changes in taxable valuations? Are there any tax tribunal informations that, that have come in? We remember this, about this time, it was a little later, it was in May, late May last year, we were surprised with a $24,000 bill that was not on our radar at all, because that's the first notification when you bumped out of formula. So, I'm hoping this spring is not similar to last spring, but she's not yet done with all that information gathering and data entering. Complicating and slightly delaying the process is the fact that they have changed their director in the equalization department, so they have a new employee in there, and they have actually contracted out for a lot of those services and equalization. So, that's slowing things down just a little bit, but those numbers are critical for us since we really look at those numbers directly, and we don't look as closely anymore at the state aid payments since we're out of formula. I will be taking these numbers into consideration as we look at final draft staffing assignments for the district for next year. Presently, based on student enrollment projections and based on the budget, looking at where we are and where we are out of balance this year, we're anticipating reductions in the area of mathematics in the grades 7 through 12, special and K-12, social studies slash Dina students, grades 7 through 12, and/or administration. I'll be speaking to the potentially affected staff as early as next week with the finalization of the county budget information. In conjunction with that, I will, of course, be scheduling a meeting to the Finance and Personnel Committee to review tentative, tentative, excuse me, staffing recommendations and review proposals for campus improvements using the sinking fund. So, we'll try to have both of those bits of information ready to be shared and reviewed by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Do you think that we will be ready for, for that before our next regular meeting? Do you think, best guess?
I think we'll be ready for the staffing side of it. I can't speak as much right now to the Antrim County Tax, Tax Valuations, Equalization side. You know, we do have about 30 days, you know, to, to gather more information. I think we can have the staffing side done. I'm sure, hoping we can have the other side done as well.
And I suspect that that will be a committee of the whole, when we announce that one, so we'll have to put that up on the site.
Moving on to technology updates, M-Step testing's underway today. 11 graders kicked it off with day one of their step, or excuse me, their M-Step testing process, thanks to all the teachers and staff, Ms. Noms and Mr. Grohl and Principal Lorenz, everybody working on this. Students in grades 3 through 11 will be tested this spring. There is a performance component and a classroom piece shared with students, and of course, the test is administered on the computer, and it's definitely a new look. It's very different from the meet, and it's brand-new to us, it's brand-new to the students, and, you know, this year is, is going to be an interesting, you know, initial baseline data building year. You know, I know all of us would be interested to see how quickly that data turns around. Before I move on, I will ask Steve or, or Shelley, have we heard how fast we expect these results to come back? Because it's a computerized assessment. I know it's the first time out of the gate for the state. Have either of you seen any projection on how quickly we expect data?
Yes.
That's enough for snag quick.
Well, I mean, they're, they use fairly weak language.
Well, I mean, they're, they use fairly weak language, but they speak in terms of hoping to have some results as soon as two weeks after the testing windows close.
And it's a two-month window.
For some tests. Some windows, well, I guess it depends on how you interpret that. The, the window for the entire process is about two months long, all of M-step. But certain grade levels have their own windows within that two-month period that are shorter. So, you know, an optimist would look at that and say, well, we may have the results for fifth grade as early as mid-May. But like I said, the language is fairly weak, so, you know.
Right.
There you go. But, you know, that was the promise of, one of the promises of online testing was that that would be potential. As new as things are, we may not realize the potential this year, but we may. So we'll just keep our rabbit's foot around.
Well, thank, thank you Steve for doing all the preparatory work and making sure the labs are ready to go, computers are up and, and running and optimized and little cardboard shields are ready and nice work. Buildings and grounds updates, I was a little incredulous when I heard that DPW and Sam Moans was planning to dig the Great Water Main Break on April 1st, I thought that was maybe an interesting name to choose. But they went for it and did it with gusto, they dug, they were digging as early as seven in the morning. And when I came over to check it out shortly after lunch, they were done. And by 3 o'clock, they had the hole completely filled in and tamped the dirt down and had their little cones out there and reopened the street. And we were thrilled that in fact the leak was directly below where it was bubbling up, so they did not have to trench up the rest of the sidewalk. They will be repaving that little turn in the concrete sidewalk that they had to dig up as well as that little square they cut out here a while after they finished their spring cleanup. So probably summer is when that's going to happen. But we're in good shape and the nice thing was we didn't lose water pressure as they made the repairs, so there wasn't a boil water notice required for the town, the village, the school. And other than some chocolate milk color, a few seconds when we first turned the faucets on later on April 1st, it was great. So thanks to Sam and DPW. Baseball fence quotes, we have received some quotes from Apple Fence, for those of you that have been to the baseball field and taken a look at it, the outfield fence is probably what maybe draws your attention. But the side fences from the two dugouts that run out to the outfield are also quite worn. I don't know how old that fence is, I've heard guesses of 30 years, maybe 40 years. It's old and it's definitely served its time. When the quotes came in from Apple Fence, all three of their bids, they gave us a three-way bid to have some different options, are above the $10,000 threshold that the board has set requiring board approval. Bids that come in on various vendors and, and smaller purchases, the superintendent has authorized to make a decision to contract with somebody if it's under 10,000. These three bids are over 10,000. One bid is 11,700, one bid is 12,800, and one is 14,200. And the difference is the height of the fence, the length of the fence is consistent. The lowest bid would be a four-foot fence down both sides and a four-foot outfield fence. That one is discouraged because your first baseline fence and your third baseline fence, it's recommended to be six-foot. Because if you have a wild throw coming in and you have spectators that are seated in that area, a four-foot fence just isn't really high enough to protect anyone who might be sitting there up on the raised tail watching the game. It is a little bit more cumbersome to look through the fence to watch the game, but it's a lot safer, so the recommendation is six-foot on the sides. And if you have to go with a four-foot fence around back to cost save, you can, that is in fact the middle bid. So the middle bid at 12,800 is six-foot sides, four-foot outfield. The high bid at 14,200 is six-foot and six-foot, do the whole thing six-foot. If you do the outfield in, in a four-foot height, you then have an additional cost to cap it with the nice plastic, you know, yellow or orange or whatever color you pick. Because that's obviously looking out for student safety, if someone's running back to catch a, a long ball, a four-foot fence might be right there and over they go. So I will be taking a close look at that, we have heard from the gentleman who did the bid that we're willing to knock off potentially 5% to 10% off any of these that we choose if we sell them back our 40-year-old top rail. They use a lot of, I guess, used fence in construction sites and temporary fencing arrangements, and so they're always looking for the larger gauge top rail. We have quite a bit of it out there that's very old and evidently somewhat desirable. So that, that might be a nice, a nice little chunk off any of those because they're going to go. Because this bid just came in, I want to make sure I, I shared it with you tonight, it actually came in today. And I'll be presenting this to the Buildings and Grounds Committee and the board can have discussion about whether you wish to do one other thing, which is solicit additional bids. Bit of information there, there is another company that actually did the, the current baseball field backstop. And that company was not called to put in a bid on this project based on the quality of work that they did. I wasn't here when that was conducted, I know Quinn can provide more information there. So Apple Fence did this bid and the other bid, or the other company, the company that did the work up there was called Project Fence. And we don't, we haven't reached out to them.
Ben, was there any talk about changing the distance on that fence or just leaving it the same?
I, I think part of, and I haven't looked at, I've got, you know, I don't have a, a template drawing.
Sure.
But I think part of this was to make a nice even arc in the outfield rather, rather than capping around what was a football field.
Right.
And so I think that's why the distances are a little bit odd.
They're really odd.
Yeah.
You go 260 in our gaps to 305 and that's stretching it and straightaway centering.
Yeah.
So it's real deep and then comes in real close and it's just not good. It was, it matches our old 8-man football field, so.
How long is that fence been there?
1966.
I was going to say, I thought early.
Wow, 1966.
I'd say it served its time.
We, we didn't have a fence when I started playing there.
Wow.
1042.
No. Not that, that's McAvoy. Go ahead.
Okay, just to know what I was thinking of, to make sure everybody understands that this is coming from the sinking fund. That it's not out of our general fund where we could use it to pay teachers or something like that, it is, you know, strictly for repairs and all of that.
And that is a healthy fund, that's what I understand.
Fortunately, sinking fund is, all of this would be sinking fund allowable. And about 96 or 98% of, actually the one I was talking about earlier, the, the safety grant, also is sinking fund allowable. The only thing is spools of wire and the actual switches that are put on the door. But doors, breaker bars, all of, all of the labor, all of the work to install a buzzer and a proper visitor ID pin, all that's sinking fund allowable. And this entire project is sinking fund allowable.
There, there are some issues that I, I would want the rest of the board to take a look at, having coached up there, I'm not sure that a six-foot fence on the first base side is tall enough. Because kids jump it from the bank coming over and.
That's where I saw that one.
It, it, that, that can be a tremendous injury, we may have to go eight-foot there for that stretch, just from, from the backstop out to the concession stand. But that's where kids want to jump it. And if, if it's not high enough, they will. And that's, that's a real risk.
And if, if I'm not mistaken, the ground on the other side actually slopes pretty dramatically down.
It was, yeah.
So you, and so there's no seating above down the third baseline, so.
So that, that's not as much of an issue, but that, we need to discuss that in Building and Grounds.
And my other question about that is, you know, I know we're posting districts and that's one of the reasons for wanting that in, but, you know, baseball season starts this week, so what are, I mean, how are they going to install that, I mean, during the season?
They, they would have to jump on it on the weekend, they say it's a one-day, it's a two-day project. They, they can have the entire post down in concrete day one, let them sit 24 hours, and they string the fence the next day, they're done. So they, they can, they, they agreed, or they, they shared with us and we, we said, well, gosh, okay, because that was one thing we were concerned about, you can't, you know, you can't really block it off for a week. And they said it was a two-day project, so that's pretty good news. In addition to the fence, Coach Eggleston and the work crew up there have been working with George Molsky, who's donating poles and material for the baseball batting cages. The post holes were, I think, dug for that this past weekend. And by hopefully next weekend, they will have that project, at least the poles off, to get the batting cage out there. And to, to top it off, Coach Eggleston and some of the kids have taken care of laying, laying down, digging down and laying the new clay brick to properly form the mound. I'm not a pitcher, but evidently without the clay brick underlayment and then the, the clay, the softer clay sprinkled on top, you wear quite a rut in that mound and it's almost, once it happens, it's almost impossible to not deal with it game after game. The clay brick underlayment provides a much firmer base, so the dragging of the toe and that repetitive drag down that mound doesn't destroy it. So they put a lot of work in, they started that project back in the fall and they, they didn't get it done before the bad weather came in, so they've just, they've, they've gotten that done, which is nice, so the field should be in great shape. Last thing there, burners pressure testing sprinkler systems, and actually the first grass that was cut was the baseball field. And that was cut this weekend in preparation for the first game, which is this Thursday, right? First home game?
Ellsworth.
Ellsworth? At Ellsworth, Ellsworth is away Tuesday and the Thursday is at home, so.
Wednesday at Ellsworth.
Oh, Wednesday, sorry, I had that wrong. Yep, yep. And that, that's the update.
That's it, thank you. Any questions, Ben? We are at closing guest public comment, nice to see so many folks here. We have a lot of people. Our rule of thumb has been three minutes. If we have lots and lots of folks, then I would hold people to that, please address the board, any public comment, who do folks?
I just want to say that on May 14th, on Thursday, I think there's already a training out at Torch Lake Township, Michigan State University is putting on, so I might want to check that.
I talked to Kathy and she said the date was cleared from 5 to 8?
Eight Thursdays in a row, it's supposed to go from 6 to 8. The only reason I'm saying is because I'm signing up for it, so.
Is it af, is it afternoon or evening?
It's, I think it goes from 6 to 9.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll double check, because she assured me good to go and I could come pick up the key, but thank you for that, I will verify.
They may have more than a minimum tip.
Ah, that's true too. Because I know, we talked to her about using the one we had used a couple of years ago when we did our welcome back staff meeting in its larger room.
Two rooms.
Could very well be.
Nice, well, don't be too loud if you're in there.
Other comments? Thank you all for coming, it's great to see everybody. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So both? Jerry and Greg? Have motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:34. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed, same? Adjourn.